Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll go around and introduce ourselves. Let's start with you, Randy.
Randy Bobden, I am the Agriculture Liaison and Field Rep for Senator Steve Daines.
I'm Carla Doncaster, Shoto resident.
Brian Colesley, County Planner.
Sam Carlson, Commissioner.
Joe DeWolfe, Commissioner.
Brian Bedord, Commissioner.
Heather McCartney Duty, resident and City Council member.
Paula Jackinetti, clerk and recorder.
Felicity Martinson, Shoto, the Cantor.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. We don't have any minutes.
No minutes, my apologies.
So, that's okay, we understand. We don't have any road encroachments. That brings us to Resolution 2025-5. There's one we had a question on, Mel, at the last meeting. So, I think we changed the date, and was there any other changes?
Just that I forgot to change the resolution number.
The resolution number, okay. So, do I have a motion on Resolution 2505?
Who's going to accept it, is it?
I would second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we advertised for an Board of Health position that was open, and we only got one letter. So, Laura Weir was the only person that applied for the position, so what's your?
I would move that we appoint Laura. I would second that.
Any further discussion?
I don't have discussion, Joe, but just for the public record, for people who may have read the coming events that I wrote for you, I had Marcia Quillan resigning from the Board of Health. Marcia Quillan works for the Teton County Health Department. She's resigning from the library board, and so she called me and said, "I think you have the wrong board," and I didn't, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Marcia, this is to replace Elaine Sedlak, who served on the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Peters Minor subdivision.
Okay, so, we've had a struggle with getting all the required information, so it went through an initial review. It was told that we did not have all of the information from Staley Engineering. Another firm has picked it up and got us all the information. On Monday, we received, sorry, Tuesday, received verification that all the documentation's been received. We now move into in-depth review of it, so we have 20 days to come up, or Staley has 20 days to advise us on whether everything is accurate, and then we can move, or their recommendation is for us to approve it, or if some information needs to be fixed. So, 20 days as from the 4th.
So, it will be ready for the next meeting in February, December, March?
I'd still like to ask to table this to the next Commissioner's meeting, so if Staley does get it finished before then, we can push for the approval of the preliminary and move for their final.
Okay. So, you're asking us to table it until the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
I would move that we table till the next meeting, Peter.
I would second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Public printing contract bids. So, we have contracted with the Cantor. Another local paper tried a couple times and was unable to fit the requirements, but we're going to advertise for two weeks, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll see what kind of bids we get. Did you have anything to add, Mel?
Nope. The meeting, the first notice, 19, the paper, the fifth, the second notice will go on in the 9th, on the 12th, and it's slated for action on the 19th.
Okay.
And thank you for doing that.
Oh, you're welcome. And this will be, it's a two-year contract, I think.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, Senate reps. Randy?
Well, I'll take the floor. Yeah, thank you for allowing me to be here today. There's nothing official on my agenda to talk about. I just wanted to reintroduce myself to the Board and the new Commissioner. Of course, Brian and I go long, long ways back in FFA and different things. A lot of things going on in DC right now, as you are well aware in the national news. It's been chaotic back there. They're trying to get some things pushed forward. The Farm Bill is a big push that they're talking about, as far as the Senate and obviously the nominations and those types of things. So, I guess I'm open for questions, or if there's anything you want to know about. If I don't have an answer, I can certainly get back to you. So, I think I've given everybody a business card, that one and one or needed one. Feel free to reach out to my office at any time. Happy to visit with you. If I'm not there, leave a message, and if you have comments, we can submit those to the Senator. He is, does a great job reviewing everything and making sure that he knows what's going on on the streets, so.
Okay, any questions for Randy, anybody? And let him off the hook that easy?
I was wondering if the Senator had, and other Senators with him, had a plan to move forward with the breaches that are happening with personal financial information, with US Treasury's Department. Now, we see that NOAA has been breached. These are private individuals that don't have security clearance. This is deeply concerning, not only for private individuals such as ourself, where we're getting alerts that we need to change bank accounts and do all sorts of massive things to protect ourselves. Does the Senator have a plan? Is there a group of them working on a plan to halt this activity, or are they just letting it run amok?
No, they are reviewing it. They're trying to figure out exactly what's going on, make sure that there is no illegal activity going on. We did hear back from the Treasury Department yesterday, the day before. At this point, they're saying nothing has been breached. There is no information that has been stolen or taken out of there that is not directly involved with the current administration. I know the news is reporting a lot of things, but isn't necessarily accurate in some of the things that they're reporting, but the Senator is monitoring it. He is very much in favor of getting rid of the various wastes that the federal government has been involved in for a long time. As far as current activities, he is monitoring it and working to see what can be done or can't be done.
But is he aware of his constitutional right, that that belongs to Congress and not to private individuals?
He is very aware, yes.
Okay, so how are they moving to ensure that stays with Congress and not the private individuals that are currently accessing all these systems?
I don't have an answer for that right now. They are working on it. It's a moving target right now, a moving plan.
Okay, any other questions for Randy? Tom hasn't showed up yet, but I'll move down to Commissioner reports. Mel, we were having a discussion about having Department Head meetings. We haven't had them in a while.
Yep.
And we decided to talk about it here in the meeting, because in the past, we've had Department Head meetings, and we assumed that they were ministerial and not open to the public, so I thought we should have that discussion here at a meeting, and get your thoughts.
Back in the day, and with a 35-year perspective, I have attended Department Head meetings when they were being held on days that I could make it. Obviously, if they were scheduled on a Monday, which is my reduction day, I couldn't, I couldn't come. But I think with all three Commissioners present, and it's a Department Heads meeting, and you start talking about one of the functions of the department, whichever department, Health Department or Road Department, and the Department Head starts bringing up things about, you know, maybe I need more funding for something, or are you aware that this legislation's coming down, it's going to impact us? I think that once you start talking about those sorts of things, it becomes a matter of public interest. So, I would, I would argue that they should be noticed as Commissioners meetings, that it's the specific agenda item is to meet with the staff, and we don't anticipate any action, so it'd be more like a work session than like a regular meeting. And I don't expect in a group Department Head meeting that people are going to bring up personnel issues. That would be inappropriate on the Department Head.
Yeah, they don't, they're pretty.
Right. You would be talking about budgeting, maybe staffing from the point of view is, you know, we need another person, but not, we need to fire this person because he or she's not doing a good job. So, I don't see any harm in keeping them open to the public, and I just, like I said, it's been years since I've attended a Department Head meeting, but I do have clear memories of attending Department Head meetings. Maybe not without, maybe not with any of you, but obviously not with Brian.
We've had them, and I've only been here 20 years. We've had them, but we've never had them open to the public.
Yeah. I'm thinking back to the Adam Dahman, Albert Carlson, Bob Kraus days, when the Commissioners were in that office, and they'd have them in the courthouse, I mean, in the courtroom. So, my two cents would be either on the side of openness, because you are in a quorum, and if you start talking with them about anything that's under your control.
So, my thought is maybe we just have a work session after a regular meeting, so you don't have to set up twice.
You could do that, if that would work with your employees.
Maybe meet at the annex, so we have a little more room. But I hate the meetings in the courtroom, because the atmosphere changes.
The courtroom.
Because it's so, I mean, it just, the atmosphere changes, so we don't have hearings or anything.
Yeah. But that's my two cents.
Okay. Well, I, for my point, I don't see any reason why we don't have them in the public.
No.
So, I think if it's okay with you guys, we'll just plan on, when we do have those meetings, Mel, we'll just have a work session after a regular meeting, and.
We can notice it that way.
We can be noticed, and then you won't have to set up twice, because we have to have you to have our meetings now, so. Paula?
So, the annex is really not a great place to sit.
The sound is not.
For that, because of the sound. Anytime that heater kicks on, you can't hear anything.
So, our option is the courtroom or here?
Well, I mean, I could put balloons up, if that makes the atmosphere better, so.
Well, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Honestly, you know, Department Heads, we've been in here before.
Yeah.
So, we could just set up a few more chairs if needed.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll figure that out, Mel, but I think that, do we have a, I mean, we're all in a green light.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
In the public. And Brian's comment was that the more people hear about what our people do, the better our job will be. It won't be easy, but it'll be, at least people will have an idea of what's going on. So, we will work on that. And I guess I can take public comments. We're still waiting for Tom. So, any, well, any other Commissioner report to talk about, guys?
Uh.
Okay, public comment?
I have some.
Okay, Heather?
I have prepared my comments to help me with my thoughts, so apologize if I read. Good morning, Commissioner Carlson, DeWolfe, and welcome, Commissioner Bedord.
Thank you.
Good to see you again. I have several items I'd like you to consider that I'll present today. Firstly, I'm here on my own business. I'm taking personal leave from teaching this morning to attend this meeting. I do not like having to leave my classroom, as substitute teachers are at a premium, and I'd rather be on holiday if I need to leave my job for the day. I'm a little bit frustrated that you hold 10:00 AM meetings, when most people are working and cannot take leave for a mid-morning meeting, especially if they have to come clear across the county. I just had to come around the corner. But would you consider, as a Commissioner, three specific ways to improve access to you and your office? Would you consider working five days a week staggered, so not everyone has to be here every day, so that a Commissioner is always available when the courthouse is open? Would you consider moving the Commissioner meetings around the county, so that communities feel their voices heard, no matter where they live? And then, thirdly, I was wondering if you could alternate the meeting times at different times of day, maybe one 10 o'clock, one post-working hours, so that people can participate equally from across the county? So, those are just three things I was wondering. And I know it had been mentioned that perhaps you would, might rotate the meetings already, but I didn't know if you had considered, like, that office hours are also important, and that sometimes people have staggered schedules so they can get in on a Friday, but often that's not a Commissioner day. And then the meeting times, you know, at the city, we get really good participation being at 5:30, because people just zip out of work and come on down and have a chat. So, I was wondering if you'd consider kind of alternating how that's done?
We'll consider it, yeah.
Secondly, because in rural areas, we all wear many hats, so I'll take off my person hat, put on my city council hat. I'm here to have you consider a perspective on the Sheriff's Contract with the City of Shoto. But first, I must address something that has been said more than once by more than one county official, that only people worth counting for service are the tax role-paying people. This has come about in the discussion around total law enforcement budget divided by the whole county population, or as in the cases I've mentioned, and it's happened twice, divided only by those who are on the tax rolls. I'm asking you to proceed with all future conversations about the residents of the county with dignity and respect, whether they are on the tax rolls or not, because here's the truth. We all live in the well-fare state of Montana. Montana and all of her residents depend on a wide swath of local, county, state, and federal tax supports to make a life here. Montana, for example, as of 2021, received $1.47 back for every $1 we sent to DC. We are supported. So, no one is really in a place to assess a person's value as a citizen and a resident based on a tax role. People are people. In a society, we all receive direct and indirect benefits from larger pools of shared resources. That's the arrangement the founding fathers had designed around representation and taxation. We do not live in a county where only landowners or only property taxpayers have standing. Whether someone has bought gas, which pays for municipal, county streets, roads and bridges, alcohol or tobacco, which helps fund the Department of Health and Human Services, tribes and veterans homes, marijuana even, which besides the general fund assists fish, wildlife, and parks, trails, which we benefit from here with many grants, surviving veteran spouses, and the Board of Crime Control, or purchased a feminine hygiene product, yes, there is a pink tax, as they call it, or even rented a home or building, because we all know that costs are always passed to the consumer, or anyone who even has job or retirement benefits, we still take income tax. So, anyone who lives in Teton County is paying taxes in one form or another. All of us are to be counted when considering how money is appropriated, allocated, and spent. We all benefit directly or indirectly from tax dollars spent on public services and goods. We receive lovely and complete libraries and public meeting facilities, safety, peacekeeping, emergency and disaster services, planning and grant writing, extension services, search and rescue, licensing, education, health and sanitation services, fire protection, water management, energy, judicial access, records, and elections, weed management, communications, utilities, and of course, our favorite, roads and bridges. I've probably missed something, which goes to show how fortunate we are, really, in a rural area to receive so many services. When I lived abroad in other countries that did not take care of rural areas, they really suffered. The electricity would end outside of a metro area. The water service would end outside of a metro area. So, we are fortunate. But as we know, in any county, while the tax chest is contributed to by many, the direct benefit often falls to a few. Let me frame this in my direct educational experience. A school receives their general fund in a nice, tidy, complicated way, just like the county. Of that student body, a small but growing percentage of students requires more than the services of a classroom teacher. They may need interventions, physical occupational or speech therapies. They may need a personal assistant due to limitations. They may need different foods due to allergies, and even a unique transportation agreement, or modified facilities. They may need mental health or behavior plans. In these cases, the family is never billed for the additional service, because whether the school receives additional monies or not, providing an equitable education to the best of the district's ability and directed by state and federal statute is the job. The school uses the human and tangible resources it has to fulfill the mandate in whatever creative way they can muster. Do more here, less there. Now, when might a school charge more for services? Well, when services and goods are provided outside of the scope of work. One example is sports. Many schools have a pay-to-play fee and charge gated admission to support the additional expenses of running facilities, hiring coach and referees as well at administration to coordinate the events. The county has similar thousands of miles of road, but school routes and thoroughfares receive the lion's share of the work and maintenance. Why? Well, that's where the use is. The county has thousands of residents, yet a mere percentage utilize law enforcement, legal, or judicial services. Why? Well, I can't go into the details here, but do read up on the preschool-to-prison pipeline that has been researched by several organizations, one of them being the American Bar Association. In summation, when children and families are under-resourced, with underpaid work, lack of quality housing, sustainable and nutritious food, childcare, or familiar support, they become people who need more intervention supports as they become adults. This includes trauma-induced health outcomes that show higher rates among long-term poor health and early death, and for some, too much time in rehabilitative systems. Residents of Teton County who have been or are under-resourced are going to require more services, whether that's health, law enforcement, judicial, housing, food, education, or energy supports. But think of this, are they going to be able to pay for it, or is that a burden to be shared by the larger population for the good of the whole population? Think of Montana as a whole. Aren't our lives better because the nation kicks in more for us to have all of our services? Aren't we fortunate that we don't have to come up with all the money for our electricity, internet, and transportation systems? I mean, what would our roads look like then? Now, back to the Sheriff's Budget, which I speak as a City Councilperson. The Sheriff, with full Commissioner and county support at the time, canceled the contract with the City of Shoto, citing that the residents of Shoto proper consume a disproportionate amount of the total county budget. But I'm wondering if that's an accurate interpretation or merely a reflection of normal use in a denser population, not an intentional consumption of services. I was wondering, have you looked at what would be an appropriate ratio of population density relative to services provided, or dollars used?
Thank you for your comment. Is that it?
No, I'm just asking. So, I was wondering what precedent there is in county budgeting for charging more to a particular group of the population when those services are mandated by state code. Sure, there are pay-to-play pieces in any organization. For the Sheriff, there's an established fee schedule for whatever falls outside of the required mandate, such as serving legal papers. And think about this in Shoto proper. The more dense areas of the city receive the most tree, sidewalk, water, and lighting services, yet the entire community shares in the cost. Some may not know this, but within the city limits, there are those who have no city water, no sidewalks, and no tree services, yet they pay the same rate. We all enjoy having a functional, beautiful town, so we pay. But let me be clear, because I think this has been misunderstood. I don't disagree that the Sheriff needs more resources to manage the ever-increasing pushdown from the state to the counties to manage certain records and procedures. This is massive, particularly on the electronic side. And I, as a wagerer in this county, experienced the severe squeeze on resources to pay for food and shelter, because our housing prices are on par with Montana boomtown economies, but our wages are not. So, attracting quality health is hard. I don't disagree that our communities are experiencing a serious uptick in mental health, poor relationships, and serious criminal activity in person and online. But I urge you to consider this as your county-wide issue and obligation, not just a city issue. I'm wondering if you've had direct conversations about how to raise revenue across the county? And if a town wants services outside of Montana code, say for local law enforcement, visits to schools, or presence at ballgames and parades, by all means, draw up a fee schedule and let's get those services paid for above and beyond what is provided and mandated by Montana code. But here's the thing I can't figure, as a taxpayer, as a teacher and a Councilperson. The Sheriff has repeatedly said, and the Commissioner, as of date, has supported, that the workforce cannot be sustained or developed without an increase in fees for his staff. Yet, to date, to my knowledge, there's not been a reduction in employees, reduced work hours, nor have there been new deputy hires. However, there have been pay raises and new facilities to be built that will require lifetime maintenance. I'm all for living wages, but the fact that the county can afford to pay well and the city cannot shows that the city has fewer resources. And I'll put this in real clear. For example, a teacher with more than 30 years on the job in Shoto and a master's degree still earns $15,000 less than the Sheriff's Position. And I, and I'm not begrudging anyone for a living wage. It's essential. And it's not because the job is more dangerous. In the US alone, 147 law enforcement officers across all sectors were killed in the line of duty, while at public schools, 263 students and teachers were killed. Teachers regularly experience non-lethal workplace violence without the benefit of hazard pay. And teachers are doing the frontline work, too, trying to import the skills and cognitive abilities that will hopefully truncate the school-to-prison pipeline. But we can't do it alone, just as law enforcement community cannot do their job alone. We must come together to solve these issues and address the needs. The city has put together a law enforcement advisory board, which is busy brainstorming ways to meet the needs of the community at a fair price. But where is the county? Where are your public hearings on increasing safety dollars? Where are you engaging others on solving this problem? As we know, funding is apparently falling to shambles and unpredictable at the national level. It will probably not always be though. Montana can get money from elsewhere. So, I'm encouraging us all to think about local, county-wide sustainability, and if the city will be doing the same. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any more public comment? No more public comment? Tom?
Yes.
Come on in and pull up a chair. We're still meeting, and I apologize for you standing out there.
No, no, that's okay. I'm sorry, roads were a little bit more slick than I thought they were.
We are on Facebook, so if you'd introduce yourself to the camera.
Yes, absolutely. So, my name is Thomas Mannanen. Oh, there's the camera. My name is Thomas Mannanen. I'm the Regional Director for Central Montana for Senator Tim Sheehy, and wanted to come introduce myself, provide my contact information. Fortunately, there's a little bit of a holdup on business cards, and I don't have that with me, but I can provide you my phone number, email address, and aside from introducing myself and starting to get to know everybody, I'd love to be able to relay any concerns that you guys have to the Senator. Maybe it's a project, something that could use help in the United States Senate, or just here, concerns more broadly with whatever's on your mind. I want to be an intermediary between you and the Senator, so that's the purpose of why I'm here. And if anybody has anything top of mind, I would love to hear those comments.
Tom, could you spell your last name for me?
Yes, it's going to be a tough one. So, M is in Mary, A, N is in Nancy, N, I, N, E, M. So, M-A-N-M-I-N-E-M.
Thank you. That's pretty close.
One of those weird finish last names, so.
Okay, anybody have questions for Tom?
Tom, I just reiterate what I shared with Randy, Senator Daines, that as a citizen, I have concerns about the private individuals that have had access to our Treasury Departments and NOAA and whatnot, and really encourage you, the Senators, to use their congressional authority to be the budget holders and controllers and not put private individuals. I mean, as a private citizen, I'm receiving alerts to change up my bank accounts, that there's information happening that could compromise us just as a regular citizen, let alone larger structures. And I know Senator Sheehy's new, so I'm sure he's swamped in all the freshman responsibilities, but do let him know, we're very concerned about our safety and security, given that people without clearances are in these facilities and not apparently in check.
I could absolutely relay those concerns.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have an issue here for the state of Montana, and it's about Montana-based contractors, small businesses in Montana. And I guess it would be for any state, and that is the restriction that the federal government has on who they accept as a contractor. So, my husband is a private consultant. He's a historic preservation professional, and he meets the Secretary of the Interior Standards for a professional historian. There are certain requirements for compliance with the National Historic Preservation Act that he works with. So, that's just his particular niche, but there's other contractors as well who are in Montana, and they are basically prohibited from becoming a federal contractor for work in Montana, because they don't have $2 million worth of sales in the last four years. That's one of the requirements for some of these. So, there's no way him doing his kind of work that he's ever going to, I mean, he'd have to be a big shop. So, basically, that just gives national or international corporations the business. And they're not, so my husband's been a federal employee. He's worked for the global engineering consulting firm that did, that had national contracts, federal contracts, and he's on his own now. He's one of the best, and he'd really like to provide the services for Montana's federal resources, but right now, he can't. And so, that is eliminating. And so that is eliminating some of the best experts out there, and it's also, he can do it for less. He can do it for less and provide a better quality than those national firms, because he's been on the other side, too. He's been on the federal side receiving contract work, and a lot of it is underwhelming. And so he'd really like to be able to provide that. I know that that affects a lot of contractors in Montana, a lot of independent businesses who'd like to provide that kind of service and do Montana proud. So I'd really like to see some changes in the contracting, and I know that's not directly the senator's influence, but I mean, it's not within their control, but it's certainly within their influence to say, hey, let's, let's let Montana, if they're the best, you know, let's open up the field of competition to contractors that, especially that are experts, you know, independent experts like he is, or providing a niche service. I understand construction, maybe potentially, I mean, there's some other contracts, like his type of business isn't just, isn't going to charge $2 million over four years, you know, contractor business, maybe they are, but his kind of business isn't going to do that. And so I just really like to see more independent firms be able to play and give the best services to the, to the people.
Absolutely. And this is a perfect example of a type of concern that, you know, I personally am not sure how the Senate interlays with what you're exactly talking about, but we've got people on the team who will be able to know if it's an actionable item or not, so I can always relay those concerns, whether or not, we know for sure if there's action that can be done, but I thank you for giving that for me.
There's a lady, I believe she's in Billings, and she is a liaison, she's a support person to Montana business, to be able to, her, her job is to connect independent Montana businesses with government contracts. But she's noticed over the last 10 years, those restrictions, those regulations have gotten greater and greater and greater. So it used to be a lot easier for Montana businesses to do federal contract work, and it's just getting to be almost impossible, so.
What was your name again?
Carla Doncaster. I have my husband's card, and I'll give it to you.
Perfect. Who's the lady in Billings?
I don't remember, but my husband.
Courtney?
No, I can't remember. I can, I can email you.
Please.
Okay, any further questions for our representatives in the Senate?
Thank you for being here and being available. It's very nice service.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'm, I'm new to the, to the team, obviously. Senator Sheehy's new, so I appreciate the opportunity to come to introduce myself, to get to know you guys, and I look forward to working alongside you for the next several months, years, whatever it ends up being, so thank you so much for having me today.
Thanks.
Good to see you guys again.
All right, continue.
With that, I think we can adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn. A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you for coming.
Emails that.
Yeah.